Please make sure you've signed in. And your phones are on silent. Are you ready?
You're good.
Okay, I was waiting for the go ahead. Notice this here, I give them that a regular council meeting of the town of Laguna Vista, Texas will be held Tuesday, the ninth day of December 2014 at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Building at 122 Fernanda Street, Laguna Vista, Texas. Called order, please rise as Councilwoman Mesky leads us into the location at our scouts meeting.
Father, we're so thankful for the many blessings you give us each and every day. May we be mindful at this time of year, Father of your son, may we be mindful of those who are less fortunate than us, that we may lift them up and give them blessings that will encourage them to have a better life tomorrow. Father, we ask that you watch over our soldiers to protect us. We ask that you give them the courage, the energy, the love that they need to sustain the many issues that they face each and every day. Father, at this time, I'd like to ask that you be with us during this council, during this meeting, that you give us the courage, you give us some wisdom, you give us the freedom to band together like we are, undeneste, but yet we can speak, we can have our say, and yet we have freedom each and every day. Be with us now, Father, and help us make the decisions of the best or bad, the right way for this community, that we may grow and prosper. In Christ name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite and ever new.
I know you're coming in, so there, please, that will be great. Local Alma.
Mayor Suzy Houston.
Here.
Mayor Burton Michaelton.
I'm here.
Councilmembers Juan Carlos.
Here.
Frank Dabalos.
Here.
Letty Keplinger.
Here.
Gary Meskey.
Here.
And Richard Inahosa.
Here.
Our first item on the agenda is proclamation honoring Richard J. Legere, the third for his Eagle Scout accomplishment. Whereas on November 15th, 2014, Boy Scout Ricky Joseph Legere III from Troop 59 is recognized by the Boy Scouts of America for successfully completing all requirements for scouting's highest rank. Whereas we're gathered here on this occasion as friends, family, and neighbors of Ricky Legere III to recognize the faithful and steady path taken in obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout within the scouting organization. Whereas scouting for both boys and girls has been an integral part of our community as well as a positive influence for many years, we note that the Boy Scouts of America are celebrating their 100th anniversary this year in the United States of America. Whereas we commend Ricky on his Eagle Scout project, a prayer garden at Our Lady Star of the Sea Catholic Church, featuring a statue of Our Lady of Mount Carmel, sidewalk pedestal Neeler, and Fort Isabel, Texas. Now I therefore, Suzy Houston, Mayor of the town of Laguna Vista, do hereby recognize and congratulate Richard J. Legere III, Eagle Scout, for this outstanding accomplishment and extending to him our deepest appreciation for all of his dedicated work and wishing him the best in all of his future endeavors. Our next item is swearing and ceremony for our new police chief, Anthony David. But before we do that, we want to introduce, we want to introduce your guests or have your guests introduce themselves and our officers.
I'll introduce the officer. This is Officer Cruz. He's a new officer here and he's going to be a great asset to Laguna Vista. He brings experience and not only experience, he's a instructor for Kiko, so we can do our own training in-house. Our senior long-term senior officer here is Frank Ledma. And then the sergeant, William, is here. And then my visitors visiting here are Ryan Maza with DPS, Commander of Brownsville PD, Star Swatch resident here, and the Chief of Brownsville PD, Mr. Rondo Arudas.
Welcome all of you. And we are glad to have the officers here too. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Face the audience or face the town council, your choice. All right, just be honest, you're ready. I, Anthony A. David.
I, Anthony A. David.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Laguna Vista Chief of Police.
Of Laguna Vista Chief of Police.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So, here we go. Does that get this signed, Alma? Do you want to get this signed now or when? No? Keep it and keep coming. Get that signed. We're going to take a quick seven-minute break. They have refreshments. We have refreshments up in here in honor of Chief David. And I'm going to set the timer on seven minutes. We have a lot of things to do and I know the health people are here to give their presentations. So come pass yourselves to lunch and cookies and cupcakes.
We love the statue of the mayor's brother right by the church. And to have people say they finished because you motivate them.
I mean, that's what it's all about. And I refuse to believe that unless it's supposed to be serious.
Why don't we get a picture of you with that?
And the top three winners that pay for certificates. I got a very nice trophy. I had my trophy getting over. Last year, St. Patrick's running, the trophy was the most biggest. Something I never did, I'm kidding you. And for being, doing what I like to do. My wedding team, I lost my trophy. We're like a family, you know, we tell each other.
If I can write the song, I wrote the song. Vengeance is out.
He's getting ready for his.
I wanted to know, probably to try putting it in. They're getting ready, they're getting ready. It's hard to do it. Twenty. So if he's going to go to practice for the parade. You can stay that long.
I'll take him. I'll take him.
Whiskers are very shabby.
Chief David.
Okay, it's good stuff.
I gotta do something.
Okay.
Go do it, let's go do it.
I'm saying it here.
Can I actually go there?
So, it's funny, like.
I hope it's a little bit more.
She's taking us there, we can get all together.
Father.
I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay.
Don't do it, let's go do it.
I'm saying it here.
I can actually go there.
So, it's funny, like.
I hope it's a little bit more.
Well, maybe he's still mine.
She's not doing it.
Even in the, even in the.
He is a couple of years.
Unfortunately, too.
He just cannot seem to pick it up.
Maybe the city's.
I like Chris Block.
No nonsense, you know.
But now it's all.
One of my buddies is a doctor.
He's a man who's a hundred.
He did a fifty K in.
For laws, his buddy, I want the first one.
There are actually some money tied to it.
Excuse me.
I think it went.
I'm telling you, you're making it down.
I'm looking down at the.
This is good thing.
He's getting on right here.
Hey, tells me all the time.
Last year, we were talking.
I never think it's hard, but I think it was.
I was so happy.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes too much, but that's okay.
Chief, we'll see you.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Appreciate this for anything, man.
Anything you need from us, training, anything you need.
We'll see, we need some help, anything he needs.
We need some help in that area, I'll probably be reaching out to you.
I cannot go by training, he needs teacher.
All right.
Oh, Chief, we'll see you later.
Chief, we'll be taking, congratulations again.
Thank you.
We're on the east side.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much.
Service here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Have a good one.
Go ahead, let me put it wherever you want.
Thank you.
Chief, haven't met you yet, Mike Carter. Tony David. Nice to meet you. Thanks for, thank you for coming to us.
Oh, no, thank you for having me.
Yeah, we couldn't get more qualified.
Exactly.
We're very.
And then, but this guy back in here.
He didn't need my help, man.
Tony, good luck, man.
All right, Ron, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, Tony, that's it. It's going to be a lot easier, I think, starting tomorrow.
That's all right. It don't matter.
No, I just have it. I trained for a year and a half.
Thank you so much. You did a good job there, but it's be safe.
Well, congratulations.
Well, thank you. Yeah. We're a little more primitive. All two halves, all day long. After you've done a month of spike games, nothing taken.
Welcome in, nice to meet you.
Haven't been running, I've run on Saturday, on Saturday.
Oh, go ahead. If you will indulge me in council to move items seven A, the 1115 waiver program to right before five and six consent agenda items, because the presenters are here and they have other plans up. So, is that okay? If you will. All right. It is seven A, update on the 1115 waiver health grant by Dr. Belinda Ryd- Rydander. I'm sorry. Rydander, thank you, Maddie thanks. From the University of Texas Health Science Center, I just need to call the health. I should practice your name on the floor.
Dear City Council, thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. It's our pleasure. We've enjoyed working with your city manager and Ms. Alma and your community health worker, Maria Nell Sella, and many of your community members over the last year. And so we have wanted to take this opportunity to give you a progress report and answer any questions you might have. So the first thing that we wanted to tell you is that one of the first activities that we did when we began this project, which is a contract between your city and the University of Texas Health Science Center, and it's funded through Center for Medicaid and Medicare dollars. And we engaged in a partnership to improve health outcomes in your community. But we wanted to start with a baseline assessment. And the document that we handed out to, the kind of colorful document, is something that we hope will be helpful to, and is actually now a little bit outdated because it was done a year ago. So it was where we started together and from where we then determined what is it that we should be working on to improve. And you'll notice that there's some information about how walkable is your community, how easy is it to access healthy food options, including, you know, water and different items like that. And so this gives you a baseline on this. And as you might expect, because the state of Texas has very high rates of obesity overall and in the South Texas area, we have very high rates of obesity, our communities are not as walkable as probably we would like. And the reason that I'm pointing that out is that you will notice, kind of on the second page, one of the, you know, one of the little pictographs there indicates that in where communities that are walkable, residents actually weigh less. And so that's a good health outcome. Another thing is that communities that are walkable, the residents, the homes that are there are valued at more. So there are just some economic as well as health elements that we wanted to point out to you. So from this assessment, we then began to work together and Mr. Gard is here and he is the project manager for all of the communities that we're working with. And so I wanted to make sure that you had met him. And we then started looking at what are some specific activities that we can begin here. One of the things that Bella has done an outstanding job at is doing blood pressure screenings for residents in your city as well as the BMI, the weight index that people may want to have that information. She has done over 200 of, for residents, and her goal actually was less than that. So she exceeded her goal in doing these screenings and we're very appreciative and proud of her for that. In addition, one of the things, you have some infrastructure in your community, but there wasn't a lot of free programming. And so that was another thing that Bella started. So she's offering a lot of free exercise classes, different types of exercise classes, and people are coming and attending that for free. So we're very, we're very proud of that as well. In addition, there were some, what we call environmental changes. So there were specific dollars in this contract to help you enhance the environment because that also supports health. And one of those is, is your beautiful hydration station. Giving people, you know, easy access to free low-calorie drinks is a one way to promote health and over time can help people move towards that healthier weight. So lots of great things are already in place. And we're pleased to say that another contract, we'd like to have another contract then for the next year. And in this contract, there's a little bit more money to this contract than last year. There will be additional monies for additional environmental change strategies that, that your community will be able to identify and work towards. There'll be expansion of blood pressure screenings and BMI screenings that Bella will be able to do. Will be able to provide some no-cost influenza vaccinations for residents, again, one way to help people be healthier and keep them out of a hospital and sickly. Continued education on fruit and vegetable consumption, how's the best way to do that? How much should we do and how much physical activity people should get? So education elements to that as well. And then, of course, the exercise classes that she's been offering will be continued and we hope to see those grow and be advertised as well. So it's taking what you've already accomplished and building on that and adding new elements. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions as, as well as my colleagues.
Why don't you bring up the weight loss challenge? And hopefully the council will join on January the 10th, where they get weighed in for three months through a contest. And there'll be cash prizes. Why don't you talk about that? That it's part of this overall umbrella with Brownsville. So we're part of this initiative with Brownsville. We're going to encourage people to lose weight for this three-month period. There'll be weighed in and on the 28th of March, weighed in as well. And the percentage of weight loss will not be determined by the pounds you've lost, but rather by the, what is it?
Right, so it's the, it's the, your initial body weight and then the percentage of weight you lose. So if someone is much heavier, they would have to lose more weight to get an equal percentage to somebody who is, weighs less at the beginning. So that there, it's based basically to make it fair on percentage of body weight loss.
So we will be promoting this community-wide and hopefully all of you will join us, including our attorney here. And we'll, we're making flyers, we'll be promoting this throughout the community.
It's a fun way to just allow for a little bit easier conversations about weight loss. It makes it something that you can talk about easily and people can band together. There's groups that can compete. We've had, it's fun when businesses send lots of employees and they decide, you know what, we're going to do this together.
I have, on the back, opportunities for implementation. The first bullet on the left, work with the NPO. We are not part of the NPO here. So if any way you can, any suggestions that you have, because this is a very, very good idea right here, but we've just.
What, but you're not part of it.
Any suggestions that you can give us and help us and.
Definitely. Definitely. And I do know that in our discussions with the NPO for this area in general, we, we have made them aware of the multiple cities that we're working with and how there is a commitment to active transport. And we, we want to think about it more regionally, even though, like you said, there's specific cities that aren't part of that. And we also have some other activities that we hope to talk with you further about, looking at grant opportunities that would include all, all of these communities and not just those that are part of the NPO. So we will, but we'll, we can make that change as well. Thank you.
How much of the grant would be towards infrastructure?
Good, so this year, your award is ninety-one, about $91,000, a little bit much, $91,430 or something like that. And there is approximately $20,000 that is dedicated towards an environmental change. So those dollars, when leveraged, can start to, to, you know, be a little bit more impactful. But even $20,000 sometimes can be used, if you submit a grant to, let's say, Parks and Wildlife, and you say, okay, we can put in $20,000, can you match? That's where you start seeing that. But it's around $20,000 though that can.
So, but you can use it with other, with other ideas and stuff.
Exactly, exactly. The, the grant, and we've given that information as well to your, to your officials here about what kinds of things it can be used for.
Where do people walk?
Where the, so that's part of the, the idea of this grant is to promote options for being able to walk easily. And those can come through policy changes, which your community has taken a big step forward in that already, as well as environmental changes. So looking at maybe barricade lanes that maybe have a ways to protect pedestrians in addition to your policies. There might be walking trails that you could connect to more easily, sidewalks, you know, there may be particular areas of your community where you would like to target some new sidewalks. So there's different, different, that's part of this grant is for your community to think about, maybe would an infrastructure change be appropriate? They even could be like crossing signals to help people get across some of, you know, kind of your highway intersections that, that may be easier.
Any other questions, Doctor?
Thank you for letting me be here. Thank you.
Mr. Leyd, did you have something?
We have problems, big problems here. The walking trail, the area out there, not here, but over, full of ticks. And very dangerous. And I'm not sure what can be done to help control it. The black car stuff that's put around here is toxic. It has a very bad effect, especially on children. And the things that are here are basically harmless. There are places in this country putting off infectious, so that stuff is not permitted to be.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you. We're going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I apologize for that. Going back to four consent agenda items, six. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted for approval by one motion. They will not be separate, especially with these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separate. Questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion, we approve consent items A, B, C, and D.
Motion on the form A by Councilman Inahosa, seconded by Councilman Dabalos, to approve consent agenda items A through D. Those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Seven B, Advisory Board Handbook, and Section 2.3A of the Advisory Board Handbook, Rondo.
Mayor, council, is it to request your consideration to amend 2.3A of the Advisory Board Handbook? I believe that page has been attached, more specifically to request that the sentence describing the library board be amended to reflect that it shall consist of five members as opposed to seven, which it currently leaves. And also the second part is that it shall reflect that it will meet monthly or as required. When you look at the other advisory boards, it also makes reference to that. So it's, you know, so they don't necessarily have to meet monthly, they meet on a as needed basis. So basically requesting that those two areas be changed from that paragraph on the library board, and that's why I put it on the.
Changing from seven to five members?
Consistent with the ordinance, it was adopted a couple of months ago.
And meeting monthly or as needed?
As required.
Any discussion?
The reason they're made.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
I checked it.
Questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion, we approve consent item A, B, C, and D.
Motion on the floor made by Councilman Henoosis, seconded by Councilman Davalas to approve consent agenda items A through D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven B, Advisory Board Handbook, Section 2.3A of the Advisory Board Handbook, Rolando.
Mayor, council, is it to request your consideration to amend 2.3A of the Advisory Board Handbook? I believe that page has been attached, more specifically to request that the sentence describing the library board be amended to reflect that it shall consist of five members as opposed to seven, which it currently leaves. And also the second part is that it shall reflect that it will meet monthly or as required. When you look at the other advisory boards, it also makes reference to that. So, you know, so they don't necessarily have to meet monthly. They meet on a, as needed basis. So basically requesting that those two areas be changed from that paragraph on the library board. And that's why I put it on the agenda.
Change it from seven to five members?
Consistent with the ordinance, it was adopted a couple of months ago.
And meeting monthly or as needed?
As required. Or as required.
Any discussion?
I'm trying to read it, I don't mean.
Is that a motion?
I'm checking it.
Motion on the floor made by Councilman Mesky, seconded by Councilman Henoosis to approve the amended Section 2.3A of the Advisory Board Handbook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, update on the 2011 certificates of obligation, Rolando.
Mayor, council, in the packet you'll find the update on the certificate of obligation as reflected in the attached general ledger. We currently have a cash balance of $60,79. As indicated on the spreadsheet, we've set aside $4,600 for water hydrant improvements. We've incorporated that amount, leaving a balance of, available balance of, or balance of $55,721 in available funds. Update two on the fire hydrant main line upgrade. Apparently, the water district is involved right now in a major project, major water line upgrade with a private development entity. And they said, we've got all the materials. I was sure that on Monday, Tuesday, we'll start to upgrade this main line that we need upgraded so we can go to $5,500.
On your Tuesday statement?
Correct. And basically, the change from the last month to this month was interest rates of $1.04. And it's reflected on the report text.
Any questions of Mr. Bella on the CEO? Item D, this is first reading to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2434, adopting the subdivision ordinance for the town, Rolando.
Mayor, council, this is to formally submit for your review as part of the first reading of the ordinance, the first, the, the proposed subdivision ordinance. There's some minor changes we need to tweak, very minor. We will have those clarified and resolved at the next meeting for the second reading. But when we want to review this ordinance, basically 99% is complete. There's one or two sections, one or two terms we need to clarify and it'll be complete. So we anticipate by the next meeting, it will be clarified. We have one of our PNC commissioners here in the audience, Mr. Flipp. They've been working, I might add, very hard on this for months. This ordinance, when adopted on the second reading, will replace the initial ordinance, which is 62B, that was adopted the year it was born in 1962, or 51 years ago. So this is a huge step forward for the community. And the planning department has been working many, many hours reviewing this on their meetings. Not only during their meetings, but they've actually been doing a lot of research and anthems. So they've spent endless hours working on this document. It's over 100 pages. We're excited about this and we'll bring the, the final draft, the second reading of the ordinance.
Rick, I thought we didn't have to approve a first reading?
You don't have to. Yeah, I mean, it does nothing if it's the second reading.
Well, the case is for you to approve the first, so do we have to?
No.
Discussion?
Can we just have some highlights on what the main changes are?
I mean, I could, basically what we're doing, what we're saying in the ordinance is that if a subdivision will come in within our ETJ, they have to comply with certain city standards. And they're part of the three-year organization plan. And any new development will require permanent gutter, will require sidewalks, and so forth. So basically, which is standard in most communities, let's say at the, which basically the original town size is already fully developed. What you have are existing undeveloped lots that basically need to be reimagined and where somebody builds. But our focus is at the golf club, where you have a lot of undeveloped area. So when they develop those subdivisions, they will have to put sidewalks and street lines and so on and so forth, fire hydrants. And what we've done is basically spell out that process and identify those standards in the various sections here. And so what you have in ordinance, basically it goes into detail, the various standards, sidewalks, fire hydrants, main lines. And there's a section that addresses that it's within our three-year organization plan, they have to comply with city standards. It's very hard to tell somebody, you know, you need to put sidewalks in there five miles away. But if they're part of an organization plan, that we will be there in two, three years, we're saying, put the sidewalks down. Or if you're not going to put them, put the money in escrow. Or give us certificates to ensure that you're going to, we'll have that money. So.
Commissioner, I, I reviewed the proposed ordinance and I provided the administration my red, pink, black ink coffee to the details. Two sections I modified. There's also some sections that were highlighted in yellow of which I had questions, so we're submitting to the city administration. Will you include it as part of the changes in the draft of the ordinance? In the wild, if you're watching?
We've incorporated the changes and suggestions the attorney has made. And it goes into detail on the standards, subdivision standards. Updating, basically repealing that current ordinance and introducing these standards, which are, I might add, in any community are pretty much standard. When it comes to main lines, your subdivision has to put eight inch lines. It, it specifies the standard for asphalt compacting, how well it has to be compacted, the fire hydrants, the, the amount of pressure on a fire hydrant, all these things. So appropriate flag shaped logs and so forth. And so a lot of these standards here are common in most communities and we're simply updating the ordinance to reflect those standards. And I might add something that is common in other communities. To give you a hypothetical situation, somebody brings a preliminary plaque and says, I want to develop. We're going to try and say, you need to give us 10 copies. We will give a copy to the utility companies, AP, the water district. We have what is called a subdivision review committee meeting. 10:00 in the morning, we, all these utility company representatives show up and say, okay, we see the plaque, we need additional easement here. So we get their input, we incorporate that input and, and then we move forward, we ask the subdivision or the developer to make the changes. And, and then they modify those preliminary plaques and then they bring them for the PNC to review. And then what happens, the, the PNC council commission reviews the preliminary plaque and it goes to the commission, to the town council. And at that point, that's when you give a green light to the developers, you can move forward on making the, these improvements. Once those improvements have been made, our engineering staff will go and review and make sure they're in compliance. We come back, the final plaque is then presented with a mayor's signature and then it's recorded before us. And then that developer starts out the lots.
Any other questions? Mr. Clark, could I help verify something?
Well learned. Thank you.
I need discussion potential changes to ordinance number 2012-19. I had this on the agenda because I have some concerns about deadlines and timeliness on the ethics. There are constraints and I, I think to be fair to anyone on the ethic board and trying to, public complain that we need to look, look at that a little further.
I tend to agree. I've read it a couple of times today and there's, I made some notations on some things that I think you might need to look at. There's, there's no major items that I could see that there were some things that I wanted to, that I could see added, but it's something that we might need to look at in an intensive session possibly.
Are we going to have a discussion on the ordinance or just one or two things of what we think we may discuss?
We can discuss the, the agenda, I don't just, potential changes to the ordinance. We can discuss anything on that ordinance.
Part of the ordinance that we approved previously calls for something that I've got a doubt with now. It seems like we've got a committee inside the committee from what the ordinance reads. You've got a five people committee. You're going to appoint three people to those to come in there and, and make a decision whether the, the complaint goes forward or not. And I don't understand that.
That is, do you happen to know which section?
It's actually page 22, section C. Section D, summary dismissal. Page 22 of the ordinance. Summary dismissal.
Mayor, I'd like to comment on that. I certainly respect what you just said, but I like the idea of the preliminary committee because it doesn't tie up happy. It has less people, less man hours. And in some cases, I think it would be a item that does not go forward to the, having the preliminary hearing, I think you could get in right there. And if it does go forward, then yes, I think the, the whole committee would be beneficial to reach a decision, especially when we're dealing with, with somebody's life and somebody's of their image. And I'm always concerned about that, whether it be an individual that I know or don't know, but I'm concerned about what happens to them when they're brought forward in any kind of committee. If it's for a derogatory reason that's been alleged, even when one is alleged, doesn't mean they're guilty, the, the reputation's already damaged. So if it can be in a realm that's less quiet, I think it'd be beneficial to the, to the people that these actions are brought forward, as much as.
The idea about the ethics ordinance, hopefully they can never meet, starting with a case. But if you've got five people on that committee for that purpose, I could have two bodies in there and when my name comes up because someone complained about me, those two bodies included, not the whole committee. You know, so that's what I'm getting there because I believe that we want to make it open and, and out front to the people that they see, we are not going to put any obstacles in that committee doing their business. Exactly. I mean, if you possibly can, because it isn't a, the other thing that, that the problem with it is that you need four fifths to vote whether the complaint goes forward or not. Why four fifths? There's not many a majority. Those are the questions that come to my mind, that I, I don't know that, why we got in the next discussion. And I know that, I don't think any of us read this thing when it was truth presented, so we, we adopted something based on, on recommendations made to us, which is normally important, normally is. So those are the questions that come to my mind.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And shame on, shame on us if we didn't read it, if we don't read everything. Mr. Davalas, Mr. Anals is interested.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question with the three member preliminary board, but yet to hear a complaint, you have to have the full board. Doesn't make any sense. Why take, you might as well take the full five board, that you have to have five members to hear it. If you don't have five members, complaint goes away. What's the purpose of that?
Which section are you in?
Section B, page 23, section 24.
That's not the way I understand it.
Page 23.
Letter B says, only a party of under a vote of at least four fifths of the entire board of ethics. Otherwise, the complaint will be dismissed. All members of the board of ethics must be present at a hearing.
Page 23 in the bottom here. It goes from 23 to 24.
Letter B, general. And it goes on to the next page, 24, C, all members of the board of ethics must be present at a hearing on a complaint.
But it doesn't say so's a day.
Mr. Attorney, there's a delay to how it works. Does a, to hear a complaint, it's five members, right?
Yes.
Then if they're, no, all five are there, does the complaint, you dismiss?
No. Oh, you need the five members to hear the complaint.
Okay.
But they have to be present just?
So what's the point of having three, three preliminary members, all five are there?
Well, it's a different process. What you're describing involving the panel of three is the initial process, kind of a pre-screening of complaints before it goes to the full board. And I'm prepared to discuss this with you, I just question whether you want to hand that discussion open session or closed session?
Yeah, I, I think.
As a consultation of counsel?
I think we should have a consultation of counsel. So I'll make a motion to go into executive session. To ask as a consultant, whatever.
You know, I'd also bring out a question there about appointing people to that committee. We've got some committee members, if I understand it, that are absent for three or four months of the year. I, I didn't come to the meeting, but the one meeting that has been called, I understand two people showed up.
So. That was why I put this on, on there to, to look, because there are, like I said, there are time constraints over here. And if some people are going to be here 45 days, then...
Maybe we need to amend our, what is the manual where you dictate the terms of committee member?
Advisor, yeah.
The adwords? Or replace people?
Well, I have a motion on the floor to go into executive session to consult with the opinion on this. Can we do both of them at same, at the same time, both executive sessions at the same time?
You mean moving up to the very last item?
Do we have to come out and go back? Isn't that what, last time we did it, to say, oh, you better do it two separately?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
That related issue.
So my motion's on the floor. Go into executive session, it's 6:49. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion asked?